All right, welcome everyone. It's exciting to see people in the audience for a change. It is 6:31 PM and I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Hillary?
Here.
Counselor Eber?
Here.
Counselor Holland?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up next is audience participation, and I believe we do have some this evening. So while the clerk is bringing that up, just as a, for your information or as a reminder, I will call people in the order that you're signed up. You have five minutes per person to speak. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. We ask that everyone maintain decorum. Please no applause or booing or any of that nature. And the most important thing to know, if you've never done this before, is that it's not a dialogue opportunity. You are commenting to us and we will graciously listen. If there's action that needs to be taken as a result of that, we'll have that conversation with staff at a later point. So with that said, the first person is Shannon Johnson.
Hi, my name is Shannon Johnson. I live at 4901 South Franklin Street, so I am right there on Franklin, using Bellevue every day. I have three daughters that are just about getting their permit. I have one with a permit, one who will get a permit soon, and then I have a nine-year-old. And I have lived there about 10 years and I have seen countless accidents at Franklin and Bellevue. I am watching the speed on Bellevue and the amount of traffic on Bellevue increase every year. I know that there are some residents on Franklin who are opposed to the light and, gosh, I wish we didn't need to even be here discussing this, but it is such a dangerous intersection. I see people turning left onto Bellevue behind cars that are turning south onto Franklin. I mean, I've seen so many potential accidents that didn't turn into accidents. It's only a matter of time. As you know, we have had a Greenwood Village resident, a pedestrian, who got tragically hit by a car. It is, I mean, I see teenagers and I just pray for them as they make that turn left because I know that they don't know how to do that, navigate the traffic. I know CDOT did their assessment and it did warrant, I'm understanding that it warranted a light. It's, like I said, I use that intersection every day, multiple times a day, and it is so dangerous. I know that we will get enough support. We will get a lot of support. I don't know what enough support is. But I hope, I hope that everyone can see that the safety of teenagers, older residents, I mean, we had my across-the-street neighbor who is an older woman who hit a motorcycle because that motorcycle was speeding so fast. It's going to affect somebody tragically on our street or in our neighborhood. And I hope it's no one that you all know or that we all know, but it is, it's only a matter of time. So, yeah, that being said, I really hope that we can look at that the safety of the intersection is more important than the property value or the traffic on Franklin or whatever people's opposition is. I believe safety comes first. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Beletz.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Beletz and I live at 980 East Huff's. And we've been there just about 13 years now. And I have three children, 21, 19, 17, and all three of my children have said, "Mom, that would be the best thing ever to have a light there" because we've had so many incidences where we've almost been hit and we've had a really hard time getting out. And the pressure on that intersection to get out when cars are behind you is really significant. I've also seen how people driving down Bellevue never adhere to the speed limit. So I think a traffic light would slow everybody down a bit. You know, you hear people racing down the street, you see the kids, and also bicycle people driving or trying to cross that intersection to go on the high line. It's definitely not a very safe intersection and I really support us trying to implement a traffic light there. So, thank you.
Thank you. And last is, is it Sarah?
Yep.
Okay, Sarah Barber.
Bracken.
Bracken. Hi.
Good evening, Councilmen and women, and thanks for listening to our concerns tonight. I've been a Village resident for the last 13 years within four blocks of the intersection we're talking about. My kids, like Shannon's, are coming up on driving age. I live currently at 7 Cherryvale Drive, which is where Summit Boulevard dead ends into Cherryvale. The intersection at Summit is too dangerous to even attempt. So we always come out and leave the neighborhood through Bellevue, or Franklin onto Bellevue. As they've echoed, it is terrifying as an experienced driver. I can't imagine, as my daughter is learning to drive in the next six months, how she will possibly fare. I'm starting to count each day how many times there's a close call as I'm inching out. There's also a retaining wall that makes it very hard to see traffic that's coming westbound. And I count, I am in and out of the neighborhood probably eight times a day, and at least a quarter of those, it feels like a close call. It's terrifying. I will also note that many people who have children my children's ages are now encouraging driving teenagers and soon-to-be new drivers to take Franklin northbound and exit the Village out of Quincy. As that feels safer, there's a light there, but as we all know, there's incredible backup on Quincy with people moving through to get to Ken in the mornings. So it's just not a viable option to get out of the Village from our portion of the neighborhood going that way. So, we're happy to present our concerns tonight. We're supported by two other members of our community and one who so tragically lost his wife, and we appreciate your concern for this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and sharing your concerns with us. That concludes audience participation. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that did not have a chance to sign up? No, seeing none. We will move on to reports from the city boards and commissions, and we're delighted tonight to have the Cherry Hills Village Arts Commission here to present their work plan for 2026. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Black.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Yes, so we have the Art Commission here tonight to present their work plan. I won't go through the same background, just the relevant pieces. This is very similar to PTRC's work plan that council reviewed at the last meeting. So, the Art Commission began developing their work plan in May and refined it over multiple meetings and even had a special work session to work on it themselves. So their final 2026 work plan was approved on August 25th, their last meeting. So the plan follows the same format as the PTRC plan that you reviewed. It begins with the purpose of the commission, as defined in their founding resolution, followed by the list of projects that's planned for next year. So some of these are standard items that CHVAC does year-over-year, but there are some new projects and new ideas in this work plan. So, here to present the plan are co-chairs for the Art Commission, Chrissy Fedorowitz and Ben Ortiz-Hill.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Thanks. So, one of our biggest focuses is events. So we've allotted 16,000 for events. And the events that we would typically like to throw, or would like to throw in the 2026, would be fundraising event, an art show event, and reception, and an artist talk. We're also exploring new options as far as like performance art as for an event as well. So possibly throwing something that's more performance-based as art as well. And then, there's a slight increase just due to, since we don't have the Sculpture on Loan program. So, we increased our art budget, or event budget for events since we are not going to have our Sculpture on Loan budget line item.
So each year, we maintain the citywide owned art. And this year, or for next year, we project it's going to be $875. It is a little bit higher this current, coming year because we did acquire Bamboo Girl at the corner of Quincy and Clarkson, so we have one additional bronze piece that also needs to be cleaned. So that's if you have a question as to why that line item might be higher than it has been. And then, as you know, we just did the new Sculpture on Loan program this year. We haven't had a new Sculpture on Loan for four years because we were in the process of fundraising for the Resilience Sculpture. And so we, we did not, we haven't changed out the arts yet, but I think that we've had a lot of positive feedback on the current Sculpture on Loan project, so thank you for approving that.
And then, as far as miscellaneous items, we budgeted $3,125. This includes sculpture installs, plaques, invitations, fundraising, marketing collateral, art supplies for partner events. And then, snowplow doesn't have a dollar amount, but it is something that we work on. So, snowplow program would continue in the next year as well. And then our consultant, we've allotted $5,000. So, his primary role is actually to help us find art pieces, but we've also utilized him in other ways such as moderating our artist talks in the past. So we would like to use him that way as well. And then, in the future, we're trying to figure out if he could help us find any grants for public art that we can explore.
So, our goals for 2026 is to update the master plan for the Art Commission. Our current master plan dates back to 2011, so it's a little bit dated. And as we've been acquiring beautiful art pieces and sculptures for the past few years, we're trying to expand it in order to include the performance-based arts. So bringing in the symphony, bringing in the Colorado Ballet, bringing in, you know, performance-based arts instead of just, you know, public art. Because one of the things that we found through the city is that people don't really want art on every single corner. So we want to try to make it so that it becomes more of an experience that people can share than necessarily a sculpture. And additionally, we have a talented designer here who is helping us redesign our Cherry Hills art logo because it also has not been updated and we feel the need that it might need a little bit of judging. So, that is one of our goals, or two goals.
So, that's our work plan.
Great, thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Robinson?
Yes, so, thank you, and it's great what you're doing. I really support it. My question is around the master plan process. How are you going to, what's your plan to involve as much and as many of our citizens as possible in that planning process? How are you thinking about it?
We have not, we're open to suggestions. We've reviewed it ourselves as the Art Commission and done some modifications with review of Emily Black to, at first. And then I think that we would probably post the revised thing on the website, but I don't know what the procedures are in order to update it, which is why it's a 2026 goal. So if you have any suggestions on how to involve the city and what they would like, we are game to any suggestions.
Or residents, too.
Yeah, thank you. Other, yes, Counselor McGuire?
I love the idea of bringing performance art in. And, I mean, while the symphony would be fabulous, I think even just smaller choirs or ensembles. But because we have that little amphitheater over across the street, I do know some local communities have children, children's theater programs. I believe there's a children's theater school over in Englewood. I would love to see kids performing in the parks. I think would just be a really, a neat thing to bring in. So, I'm just giving that.
Yeah, that would be great to explore.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Other questions, comments? Okay, so I want to be, just to make sure that we're clear, is this, when you add up the proposed projects and spending, is that asking for an increase in the budgeted amount, or is it within your budget?
We have historically had a $25,000 budget and it's within the $25,000 budget.
Great.
The only, in 2020, we're hoping to fundraise more next year as well with a different, because we have a bigger events budget. And then, in 2027, we would maybe increase our budget, but we would be using not the city funds, but our
Donation funds.
Donation funds in order to do more projects. So like when we did the Resilience sculptures, we fundraised, it was $120,000, so our budget went up by that amount. Some of it was from when we built this beautiful building, that we got some money, but we fundraised for most of it. And so, that, our budget then became, you know, $140,000 for that, for those years when we had that. So, but it would be, it's not from the city, it's from our fundraising efforts.
And then I guess, I know I've attended several of the events and they're wonderful. I don't know if you, if you haven't been doing this, I guess I'd like to ask that you start doing it. But keeping track of who is attending those events and if we're, if we're getting a different mix of people at each of them, or if it's the usual suspects, or, you know, so that we can just tailor the types of things that have the broadest appeal in the community. I think that would be great. I thought the artist talk was very well-attended and had people that I don't know and I haven't seen at other events, and so I thought that was great, you know, a great way to reach out to them. When I walk into a room and I know everybody, then I start to get worried if we're being effective. Counselor Robinson?
One more question and comment. Have you ever surveyed the residents to see what artists we have among us, both?
Yes.
We have.
Yeah, okay.
We actually have a direct, an artist directory on our web, on our
Yeah, webpage.
Webpage of local artists, and we have, Julie Mer is one of our
Commissioners.
Commissioners, and she has reached out to, has updated that. So, we have an updated artist in Cherry Hills Village list on our website.
Fantastic. And I just want to second Counselor McGuire's comment about performance art. I think that would be something that would be really wonderful.
We have a beautiful park, so we should use it. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you for all of your work and your service for the Village. Any other questions or comments? And thank you guys for also being here and for your service on the commission as well. It's really fabulous. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us.
Okay, we will move to the consent agenda.
And I'd like to remove Consent Agenda Item 6C.
Okay, there's been a request to move, remove 6C.
Any other removals? If not, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 6A and 6B.
Second. Is the motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
I didn't weigh in. I'm not familiar with, I need to look at 6C.
Oh, okay, well, we just approved A and B.
We're just talking about A.
And then, because we removed 6C. So are you in favor of A and B, which are the minutes and the reappointing members to planning and zoning? Okay, so Counselor Robinson is in favor of that. So that passes unanimously. And now we'll move on to 6C and I'll turn it over to Counselor Holland to express his questions or
Well, and the thing is, is that we're approving the contract, which requires an additional appropriation, and we're not making the appropriation until later. I don't think we should approve the contract until we've approved the additional appropriation. So I think it should be postponed until we do that.
That, I think that sounds very reasonable. Thank you for catching that. So we will just re, we'll change the agenda and we'll insert Item 6C after Item 9A.
And Mayor, just a note on that, this is first reading of that supplemental appropriation?
Oh, do we need to approve the contract? Is there a time deadline on the contract?
Well, in the past, and if you look at the motion, it's contingent upon the second reading being passed. We thought if there was any discussion, we would want to discuss the overall project before we got to the council bill. Because if council decides, "We don't want to do this project," there's no reason to talk about the council bill.
Well, do you want to just go into the project components of it right now, then? Or do you want to, because that also makes sense.
That does make sense. I mean, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
I didn't see that on, so the, the motion to
The motion is contingent.
So it's just a contingent thing. So in other words, we'd approve it contingent and the contract wouldn't be signed and obviously handed out until such time as the money is appropriated.
Correct. Correct.
To be clear, it's council's decision. You can, you can talk about it now, or you can talk about it later, because if that doesn't pass, this contingency kicks in and it won't, this one won't be effective. So whenever you're more comfortable in talking about it, we can do that.
Well, let's, let's move forward with it now. Since it's been removed from the consent agenda, does anyone have any questions for Director Goldie about the contract or why, you know, what it is, what it's for, et cetera?
Not about the contract.
Nope, I don't either. Mayor, thank you.
Yes, Council.
Just wanted to double check. Prior discussions on this indicated that, you know, because the number was higher than originally anticipated, I think you and I have had some discussions. It was largely because of transportation and disposal fees. I guess the question, while we have it on as a priority project for doing now, do we have any expectation that either of those can either, you know, will either go down over time or do something that makes it worthwhile for us to bump this project out a bit in hopes of either lowered transportation costs, lowered disposal costs, other options? If there's not, this number looks like it's what it's going to be. And if that's the case, we need to probably go ahead if it's going to be a project that we want to get done. But my only question was, is there any reason to put a pause on it for right now in hopes that numbers would go back down?
And is the opposite also true, that numbers could go up?
Right.
Correct. Because of the location of the pond, and, and we broke out the numbers, there's some general numbers that aren't going to go down. It's the, the traffic control, because we do have to bring big trucks down the High Line. There's always going to be that. That's not going to go down with labor rates. And the, that cost goes up again, the hauling, because you can't bring in 18-wheelers. This is all dump trucks, large dump trucks, but still smaller than you would use. So the economy of scale, we have to double the number of loads that we're taking out of there. I don't see the number going down. I don't see the numbers in construction of anything going down in the near future where it would make sense to pause this. I only see, and that's the reason, we, when we first got our engineering estimate on this, it was 2023, hence why it's so low. Then in 2024, we got an updated number, but it was after the budget had already been approved. So we didn't feel that we needed to come to council and say, we need this much money. We, we of course told council, like Counselor Eber said, we knew the numbers were going to come in higher, we knew we were going to need a supplemental appropriation. Let's wait until we have actual bids so we can do that.
So I, and this will be odd because it is broken up the way it is, but Emily, could you refresh my memory? Let me just start out by saying, when I saw this number, it took my breath away a little bit. I have always been a huge proponent of the pond at Quincy Farm, even from day one on the Visioning Committee. I love that pond. $589,000, half a million dollars for a pretty small pond is a lot of money. I mean, that's a lot of money. Now, I think some of it is in the form of grants. And so can you refresh my memory, what we're talking about in terms of grants?
Sure. So we have $241,088 of this cost is going to be offset by an Arapahoe County Open Space Grant that we got back in 2024 when we had the original estimates and applied for that grant. So that, that amount is going to be
Can I apologize that I should have included that number in the memo to council?
Thank you for the apology. Not necessary. I mean, we have the information now, but, so that does
And one follow-up question, if I might. Just is that 241 dedicated to the pond, or could it have been used for other purposes?
It's specific to the pond project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And something that might be helpful, if you don't mind, can I jump to here? So we, just to talk a little bit more about the project itself, because we talked a lot, or I talked a lot when I presented the grant about the habitat improvements, because that's why we got the grant. But there are large parts of this project that aren't sort of aesthetic or habitat improvements and vegetation. The pond is important infrastructure for the farm as well. We use water from the well that's pumped into the pond to irrigate the west side of the farm. So the trees, the pastures, and then the bluegrass and those gardens that are around the west side. So a large chunk of this project is fixing that irrigation or improving that irrigation infrastructure. And then part of this project does also involve creating a spillway for the pond. If the pond, if we were to get a huge storm, if the pond were to overtop, it doesn't have a designated spillway right now. And there are neighboring homes right behind the pond. So part of the project is also creating a spillway that will spill towards Kent Denver Fields, basically, in a way that's safe for all of the surrounding properties. So I know we've talked a lot about the habitat piece and the pretty parts of the pond, but a large chunk of the expense is also that infrastructure and stormwater piece.
So is it safe to assume that the, if it weren't, if we didn't have the pond, our irrigation option would be to use city water?
Yes.
And that that would be probably more expensive?
Yes, certainly, it would be more expensive. Or to somehow create a separate infrastructure that brings that well water still up to the west side, but that also wouldn't be a zero-cost project.
Yeah, okay.
And looking at the recommended motion, I think the language that is at the, it's in the second sentence, contingent on the passage of Council Bill 03 Series 2025, should also be added to the end of the first sentence. I think you need that qualifier.
Oh.
Because by having it just in the second sentence, I think it only applies to
To the contingency.
And actually, it should be to the third one as well. I think I had the same, same concern.
So maybe we could just reword it to say, take it out of all of those and at the end say, all of the above contingent.
Yeah, I think that's
Or, or I was just going to suggest you just say, hey, contingent on the passage of Council Bill 03 Series 202025, I move to A, approve, B, contingent, C, sign.
Okay.
This is where my sad lawyer brain kicks in.
Well, sorry, before we jump to that, are there any other questions about the project? Or, yes, Council Fisher?
I do. I'm wondering about weather. So if the, you know, have, have they talked to you about freezing ground and, you know, concerns about that?
Yes, we, working on the pond is a tricky thing. We don't want to do it when it's wet. We don't want to do it when it's frozen, but we would rather do it when it's frozen if we have to. Because that area has been saturated for 70-plus years, a little freezing weather won't hurt us, because we'll already be in there working in October before there's any real frost in the ground. If we tried to start in January or February, the frost might be too thick to start. But this, the early fall, early winter is a good time to get in there, because there's less moisture and that, if it does freeze a little, it will only help with being able to get all the machinery down in there.
And then, just to follow up on the machinery, the access will be from Quincy going on to the High Line Canal. Do you anticipate having to close the canal at all?
Yes, we anticipate while we are hauling all of the 2,000-plus yards of soil that needs to come out of there, that we will have a detour. We haven't figured that out yet, exactly how we're going to do that, but we do believe for at least a few days to a week, there will be a detour at that area.
Okay.
Yeah, Council Holland?
Two questions, if I might, yeah. Just a follow-up on that. Is the cost of any repairs to the canal surface included in the trucks going over it?
No, we, we actually kept that out of the contract. When we refinished the surface, we did not do that section. So we will do exactly what we did with the rest of the High Line and repair that after, after the bridge going to the east side and this project are complete.
Just a follow-up question on the stormwater, Emily, or for one of you. The canal has an important stormwater purpose now. Is that connected to the pond in any way? Does the pond take stormwater overflow from the canal?
There is actually, that doesn't take any overflow. But the pond does have a head gate to it. And depending on what the stormwater and all of that that comes out, now that the county owns it, we still might be able to bring some of that water in. We also have some separate rights, some Ontario water rights, that we're still working with Denver Water on as to, if you can't get us that, that water, how can you supplement that?
From another canal?
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, Council Robinson?
Question about the contingency, the 5%, how you came up with that? Is that consistent on other, this is a significant project, my experience limited, but of home renovations and so on, is that 5% is usually not enough. So I, would you just speak to that?
Yes, we do different contingencies depending on the project. If we have less of a, of a good feel for it, we'll go to 10% or higher. But in this case, because it's a hard bid, we know the, we know the quantities, those have all been engineered. And so we're pretty confident in these numbers, so that's why we've, we've kept it smaller. And because of the size of it, the $30,000 is a pretty good contingency. We hope to spend very little of that, but, and, and there's, part of the, the way the RFP was written is, you know, we know it's going to be wet, that, that you guys have to deal with that. That's part of the bid as to if you're getting vehicles stuck or you have to bring in a different type of equipment to work that. That's all been laid out upfront, that here's the job. And, and so that we don't see any unforeseen, unforeseen large items that are going to, would be change orders, because the job is the job and that's the way we spelled it out in the contract documents.
One, one more question, and this is maybe naive, but maybe I didn't read it thoroughly enough. But, so do they have to drain the existing pond entirely first in order to do
We, we have been draining it all summer. It is almost dry. We, we have a little puddle left, the deepest portions maybe three inches.
And then, in order to fill it back up, are you reliant on rainwater or how, what is
We will, once it's done, we will turn the well back on and slowly fill it back up.
We're going to run a hose from your house, across university.
And it will take some, it will take some time. I don't know how long, but probably more than a month to completely fill it.
Great. Any other questions? Then Council Maguire, I think you had a really great point. Would you like to take a stab at a motion or?
Yeah. I move to approve, comma, subject to, hold on. Where is it?
Subject
Subject to, I move to approve, comma, contingent on the passage of Council Bill 03 Series 2025, A, the construction contract with Western States Reclamation LLC for an amount not to exceed $589,445, comma, B, a 5% contingency of $29,472 for the construction contract, and to authorize the city manager or public works director to execute any change orders necessary to complete the work for a total maximum expenditure of $618,917, and C, to authorize the city attorney to negotiate such changes to the construction contract as may be appropriate and do not substantially increase the obligations of the city, and D, to authorize the mayor to execute the construction contract when in final form.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Normally I would repeat the motion, but I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to say, all, is this a voice vote? Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Next up is item 8A, Council Bill 2 Series 2025, amending section 2-4-40B of Chapter 2 of the Municipal Code Concerning Qualifications of Municipal Judges on Second and Final Reading. City Manager.
Mayor, members of council, this is the second and final reading of a bill to begin to help modernize our court as it relates to the opportunity for residency requirements related to our judges. The current ordinance requires that our judges be residents of Arapahoe County, and this particular bill would just strike through that requirement. This is consistent with a series of other modernization efforts, some of which you'll hear about later on in the agenda. So with that, council, I'm sorry, staff is available to answer any questions that council might have.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none?
No questions for staff, but I do want to make a comment.
Yes.
Last time, I basically also suggested that we get rid of that additional clause about the good moral character with judicial temperament. My fellow colleagues didn't agree with that, but I wanted to just pass on some information that they may not have been aware of. That with regard to P&amp;Z, PTRC, Board of Adjustment Appeals, mayor and council, none of those qualifications are in there. In fact, there are virtually no qualifications whatsoever other than to be residents. Moreover, there is nothing about, with regard to our esteemed clerk and our treasurer, and nothing with regard to the city attorney or the chief of police. Zero point zero. Yet we feel inclined that we need to have it for our judge. I suggest that either A, at some point in time it goes away, or we start adding some of those same qualifications in for some of these other positions. I prefer the former, but I think it's really, really strange, particularly when you look at the city attorney and the chief of police.
Thank you for that comment.
I'd just say that's, thank you for doing that work, and it persuades me that I would be supportive of removing it.
I, I will just offer one thing. I am not going to attempt to address the comparison with the requirement or lack thereof for other positions, but at the last meeting, Counselor Holland, Mayor Pretim Holland, wondered out loud maybe, what, how one would, might measure this particular standard. Just for reference in the RFP, we do, we do have an opportunity to provide background checks, including any criminal history, which I would offer to you in my humble opinion as a proxy for this particular provision. Whether or not we do that with others is not, I'm not going to wade into those territories, you know, for any other positions. But I just did want to offer, we put some thought to that, and I do think we have a reasonable response.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would just counter that I think judges are held to a little bit higher standard, no disrespect to the police chief or others. And I would just leave it as is.
Okay.
And the only other comment, Mayor, that I would make, excuse me, is that while we are voting on whether to strike the requirement that they be a, I think the exact language is, a resident of Arapahoe County. I think it's important to note that it doesn't mean that they are excluded from being a resident of Arapahoe County. It's just no longer solely a requirement that they only be in Arapahoe County. So it's an expansion of our potential judgeship pool.
I think the city manager, when he made this presentation originally on first reading, pointed out, and I think it's important, that the judges, every, all of the judges that I'm aware of have been Cherry Hills Village residents. But that was never the requirement. That is a choice that any council can make at their time, whether they're specifically looking for candidates from within the city. I think this just allows greater flexibility in the future. And in particular, if there are things that, special cases, this provides us an opportunity to meet whatever particular special needs we might have. to meet whatever particular special needs we might have at any given time without, you know, being restricted to county residents. I actually feel quite confident that there are probably many residents of Arapahoe County that would be very qualified, but there's no reason to put unnecessary restraints on our practice. So I would entertain a motion or more comment, did you have another?
Yeah, just a small comment. I think when you think about how many of our residents have exposure to the judge, you know, there are probably a lot more people who, good reasons or bad, would recognize the judge than would recognize me. So I like keeping that in. I mean, if that, if our judges are sort of upholding some of what we want in our city, you know, we do want good moral character.
Okay.
Well, I'm not gonna push it, and I appreciate, I appreciate Counselor Robinson's support. The issue is, is that I want good, I want good, good character and judicial temperament, hopefully for everybody on our council, certainly, certainly for our city attorney and our police chief, and as well as any public servant that we serve here. I don't think there's, I don't think there's any exception, and I disagree that necessarily that he would be held to a higher standard.
But we don't evaluate those people. Counsel, as counsel.
That's a valid point.
Well, we do.
City attorney does, yeah.
Right.
City attorney, maybe. And council members are elected, so unfortunately, I think we've seen there are many council members who are not of good moral character, not on our council, but.
And I guess, I guess the other thing that I'd say too, and I, which is, and I struggle with this, and I know from time to time our mayor does, but I think that virtual signaling is something that we need to stay away from. And that's the act or practice of conspicuously displaying one's awareness of and attentiveness to political issues, matters of social justice and racial justice, instead of taking effective action. I actually don't think those words in there will have any impact on what we do, okay? That's the whole point, and if they do, we probably need to be looking to putting them in elsewhere. And by the way, we do have something to say about appointing people to the Board of Adjustment Appeals, Planning and Zoning Commission, PTRC, et cetera, et cetera. So again, it's a question of consistency and being, communicating what our expectations are, et cetera. And when I see something in one area and it's not in another, I sit back and go, well, they think it's important here, but it's not important there. That's not the case here, it's just because we were probably, you know.
They were written at all different times, by different people.
Exactly, so I made my comment, I'm not gonna push it, but I do appreciate Counselor Robinson's support in that area, so.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion, oh, thank you. Oh, turn your.
I move to approve Council Bill 2, Series 2025, amending section 2-4-40, Pren B and Pren, of Chapter 2 of the Municipal Code Concerning Qualifications of Municipal Judges on Second and Final Reading.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll? Counselor Heller?
Yes.
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on then to the second half of our previous discussion, Council Bill 3, Series 2025, amending the 2025 budget approving a supplemental appropriation in the Conservation Trust Fund and approving an interfund transfer from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Conservation Trust Fund for the Quincy Farm Pond Restoration Project on first reading. And I will turn that over to Director Newman.
Okay, you're sorry. Yep, there you go.
All right. Just a second. Voila. There we go. So as we just talked about the new contract, the original budget for the Quincy Farm Pond was $331,000, that was approved by council with the 2025 budget. When the bids came in, we are roughly $288,000 short. And so to make up that remainder, we are recommending a supplemental appropriation, less than that amount, because there are three projects within the Conservation Trust Fund budget for 2025 that won't be occurring. Therefore, we could reappropriate that $150,000 towards Quincy Farm Pond, and then we would only need the additional $137,000 to be the supplemental appropriation to cover that remainder of that budget.
So to be clear, when you say there are projects that won't be occurring, you mean there are projects that won't be occurring this year? Or we've decided not to do them anymore?
So the three projects that are up there on the list, we always have a $25,000 placeholder for any work we may need to do on asphalt trails each year. The Tufts Foot Bridge is on hold, as you know, where the Tufts Bridge is, there are some other issues with sewer lines and access easements, and so Mile High Flood District and the city have decided we're gonna stay out of that area right now. The bridge is not in danger of collapsing or is not unsafe, so when appropriate, we will put that project back into the budget. And then the Quincy Farm Barn closeout, we're done with the barn, yay, thanks, Emily. So we won't be using those funds.
But we use it at all, okay, thank you.
So, but to clarify what you just said, the $75,000, it's not that that's money we've saved, that's just money that's not gonna be spent until, that project is money that won't be required until in the future?
Yes.
Okay, the other money is money that's not otherwise being spent?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions about this, or I know we've already kind of talked about, yes, Counselor?
Yeah, and I noticed, and you have it in the second whereas clause of the ordinance, which is good, and it has to do with, you know, the section of the Charter 9.10, which is my big bugaboo, which basically says that we can't have an appropriation unless, unless, and in, to make, as long as it, we can have an additional appropriation as long as it doesn't exceed the amount of actual and anticipated revenues of the year, which goes to the revenues stated in the whereas clause, but I just want to ask and go, you've looked at that, and in fact, your view is, is that we are gonna have at least $137,000 worth of revenue above and beyond what the current budget of revenues is. And I think that, I think we will too, because I thought we're gonna hit it just on interest alone, but I want to hear you make that comment that, in fact, that is the case.
We will, yes, and that goes to the second part of the supplemental appropriation request, is that also because our, right now, this entire project is in the Conservation Trust Fund, to make up the remaining balance and not run the Conservation Trust Fund into the negative, we need a transfer from the Parks Fund to cover it, and we will absolutely be $137,000 above predicted revenues in the Parks Fund for this year.
That's good, that's good, because that's one of the other things that, when I looked at this again, you know, and it basically doesn't talk about specific funds. And so then the question is, is when you interpret 9.10, are you just lumping all the funds together, or are you just looking at it? Because when you, when you talked about that, I thought, hmm, I wonder if, I'm certain the general fund's gonna be over, I didn't know if the Parks Fund would be over or not.
With interest and investment earnings and a few other things, it will be over at least this amount, at least as of right now.
I'm glad you clarified that, because I always thought it just meant total, in total, not on a fund by fund basis, so.
And it's not clear, I mean.
Yeah, you're right, it's not.
So that's, that's something that ultimately.
That was my assumption, right, yeah, okay.
That is a good note for me going forward as well, thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions or comments, anyone?
I move to approve Council Bill 03, Series 2025, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village, amending the 2025, amending the 2025 budget approving a supplemental appropriation in the Conservation Trust Fund and approving an interfund transfer from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Conservation Trust Fund for the Quincy Farm Pond Restoration Project on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll? Counselor Heller?
Yes.
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you very much. And we will move on to item 9B, which is considering a request for proposal for municipal judges, and I'll turn that over to City Manager Kramer.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The item before you tonight is another effort in a topic that council has been hearing a lot about lately regarding the city updating and modernizing our municipal court. Just as a little bit of background, part of the motivation for staff jumping into this topic is related to some external factors that have come into play recently. Outside groups have been scrutinizing municipal court, including our own state legislature, attempting to get into the middle of municipal court business, that's my own editorial phrasing. We also have outside groups that are scrutinizing the operations of many municipal courts, while that, that specific individual court scrutiny has not happened yet here, it is certainly a possibility. Furthermore, or in response to that, we've also been looking at some other aspects of the municipal court operations to ensure that we are updating to best practices for the way we operate municipal court. Specifically, for example, the city is investing in new software for the court operations itself. Our police department is investing in two different software systems, one related to our ticketing, your citations, ensuring that that is compatible and works with our court software so that we can, you know, have up to the minute date assignment, any other relevant information that then goes into the system, it should all be a lot more seamless. Finally, also our code enforcement, we're gonna be investing in software there. The reason that I think the code enforcement software is important is because we've also seen an uptick in the kinds of cases that have been going to our court, an uptick of code enforcement cases, animal control cases, even a few potential jury trials that have gotten close recently. And so all of those more complex cases combined with the additional scrutiny has led us to look at all these kinds of enhancements. So we've looked at software, we're also gonna be enhancing or installing enhanced court security. The chief is actually going to, we're gonna install magnetometers, yes, I said that correctly. And we're gonna have, we're gonna have security on site during court itself, we're gonna be doing a good job about communicating the rules related to security for the court, such as firearms, et cetera. And so as a part of that, staff is recommending that council consider an opportunity to do a request for proposals for municipal judge services, really in an effort to update and possibly look at a more, a different level of municipal judge services that our city could use. This particular request, combined with the elimination of the local residency requirement for our judges, would give us an opportunity to see what kinds of judges might apply, or firms for that matter, to see if there's an opportunity to, again, provide a more professional high level of service for our court operations. So that is really the question to council tonight, is for your consideration of this. There's no motion, there's no, yes, please, thank you, there's no motion, we are simply seeking staff direction whether we should go down an RFP process for these services.
Thank you for that, and I will just add, I wanted to add in that I have personally spoken to both of our judges, so they are both aware of these efforts, they understand the nature of the discussions that we have been having, they have both individually, to me and I know to other staff in the past, expressed even their own ideas of things that need to be addressed in the way our court operates. And so I've also invited them to provide feedback or input into this process and into the RFP in particular, if there's anything they feel we specifically need, any holes we might need to fill. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that they're involved in this process, and so.
And so in your packet, there was a draft RFP, and obviously, there's, there's multiple provisions in that RFP that are consistent with many of our RFP processes. The two highlights of the RFP, though, for council's consideration, and hopefully you've had a chance to review them, would be the schedule and the scope, the scope of services. So, again, staff is available for any questions you might have, especially that relates to content of the RFP, your desire to move forward on this process or not, et cetera. Any direction that council would like to provide.
So I think as it relates to the scope, what I would say is that I don't really consider myself very qualified to assess the scope. I know that this RFP is modeled off of other jurisdictions, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's almost like you don't know what you don't know, so asking me what the scope of services should be is not an effective way. So I will trust that modeling it off of other communities, and then also inviting our current judges to provide feedback on that scope, I'm gonna put my confidence in that feedback. And then I would say that the timeline is, you know, is aggressive, but I think, I think it's manageable, so. Counselor Fisher, I think you had your.
Yeah, I do have a question about scope, I don't know whether it belongs here or not, but would it make sense to add, I don't know if it's a bullet or a little letter, whatever it is, that says that at least on an annual basis, or maybe, maybe whatever timeframe we agree to, that the, that the presiding judge would be expected to provide, you know, some quantitative?
A report.
Yes.
A report to city council.
A report to city council, and maybe even a self-evaluation, which is sort of consistent with how other people get evaluated sometimes.
I think there's an opportunity for us to provide an addition, I think that's a great idea, personally. I think there's an opportunity for us to provide a bullet, or add a bullet that says something along the lines of, the judge will provide a report of, and feedback to city, well, not feedback, but provide information to city council on an annual basis, that could include things like self-evaluation, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
I hate to lock it in right this second for such a specific piece.
You know, yeah, we should probably keep it as general as possible, but I do think we, you know, need.
Set expectations.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we can do that in a kind of a vague way that still puts that expectation out there. Not vague, a general way.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes, just a question on, if we move forward with this, how do we make sure that it's distributed widely so that we're able to obtain the best talent? What's the, what's the marketing plan, I guess?
I'm going to call on our human resources manager, who's been working diligently on this very question.
Yeah.
ND.com/judges.
Yeah. Sorry, I had it pulled up and, of course, disappeared. So we plan on, as RFP suggests, it'll be posted on the city's website and with Rocky Mountain Bidnet, which has changed their name, that's not correct. But then there are also listservs for municipal court, colorado municipalcourts.org, they have a resource and career page, as well as with the Colorado Association for Municipal Courts, and then on the city clerk listserv is also a good area to post those things, so.
And as staff has begun to have some internal discussions about this, we have gotten some specific recommendations to us to say, make sure you send this to that person or that person. So we actually have a running list of some specific individuals that we'll be sending this to as well. So we are attempting, there's no silver bullet here, this is silver buckshot, we're gonna be trying a variety of different solutions.
And we have gotten, even from our current judges, names of some other people that they think would be potentially good candidates. Other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Counselor McGuire?
Oh, sorry. I had a question, just in reviewing the RFP and then the contract that's attached as an example, or as an exhibit. In section 8, under the terms and conditions, paragraph 8, we say the city premises to obtain insurance coverage and continue in place which. and continue in place, which includes the presiding municipal judge and other judges, while performing duties within the scope of the agreement. Sounds really broad.
It is broad, but it is specific to our policy with SIRSAS. So as city council members, you appoint the presiding judge, which falls under property and casualty with SIRSAS because we are, you as a board are appointing the judge to preside over a specific scope and duties of the court. So it's broad because the policy, insurance policies are typically broad with lots of exclusions and other lists, but it is.
Well, my, my question is, in, in the, in the contract, we then say that we aren't going to provide any insurance except as provided in the municipal code, which refers to a bond, which is fine. But this just seems overly broad, given what the municipal, and I don't know if the, if the con, if the insurance that you're talking about, is that the bond? Or is that something else?
It's not. From what I remember, the bond is something that we used to bond the city manager, our treasurer, the finance director, I believe.
City attorney.
City attorney. And we have modernized, I guess is the best term to use, to utilize the city's insurance policy. So with the positions within the city, there is, they call it excess crime coverage, which covers embezzlement, fraud, those certain terms.
Even though he's an, he or she, the judge, will be an independent contractor, not an employee?
Yes, so because it's appointed by, it's a position appointed by city council, it falls under our insurance for the duties specific to the court. So if something happens in their, within a firm and we get lumped in with multiple entities, that would not be covered. It's specific to what happens in the scope and duties in this room as a, as a judge.
Then I think we may need to just change the language in the contract.
I was going to say, we, the good news is, right now, the exhibit for the con, we aren't voting on this tonight.
Yeah.
That is something that I absolut, we will have time to review that with Kathy for sure. So I think we still have to, let us look into that.
Yeah.
Duly noted.
I suspect that is a sort of a vestige of the fact that this is based off of a different, a sample from a different city who has a different code and different.
I, I know that Kathy gave it, sort of applied some Cherry Hills Village sections to it, so I, I, we just need to scrub that.
Yeah.
But I think the RFP ought to be a little more specific.
Sure, yeah, we can make changes.
Yeah, I, two questions, Mayor, one's related, I'll yield on the other one until you get to my turn, but for judges, since there's sovereign immunity alike, there's no errors and omissions or malpractice insurance, because it's not really property and casualty.
Well, the errors and omissions falls under property and casualty, I apologize, that's the.
Okay.
And you can go ahead, yeah, go ahead with whatever other questions you had to, yeah, and then we'll come back, yeah, we'll come back down this way.
As long as my colleagues aren't.
Yeah.
So I just, I know we talked about this before and it may be baked into the municipal code and commendable that we're going to update and modernize all of this. But the qualifications still seem very light to me and, you know, I, I know we don't have to hire the minimum, but five years' practice without being a judge, is it baked into somewhere, we can't change it in the RFP to something along the lines of five years as a judge or 10 years' practice of law? It just seems very, very light to me. And if it isn't a code, is that a minimum standard? Can we make it more strict?
I believe our code has the qualifications to be a judge of.
Well, it has minimum, I think Counselor Heller is right, it's minimum standards, but in an RFP, we can put the, we can put whatever we want. That's above that.
I, I think we were looking, this is, this is going to be the city's first time to ever go through this process, so we leaned heavily on some RFPs that other similar jurisdictions used. And, and this was, I believe, the, sort of the standard background that we, that, I, I would highlight, just like the residency requirement, just because that's the minimum, doesn't mean we have to hire to the minimum, obviously.
Sends a message.
But it does seem like it's the industry standard. However, with that said, should council wish to have us raise the bar on that standard, we absolutely, we're just reflecting really our best research.
No disrespect to my colleagues who are lawyers in the room, but they're a dime a dozen, so there should be plenty of.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think that you make a really good point, which is that the, the, the need for this is because we need a broader experience base.
Sure.
And so I think to, to be more specific about that, so that we don't, that we get people who are really truly meeting the need of the community in this particular instance. Right, and not.
Mayor, I want to emphasize my, the years I've pointed out were just exemplars.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I think something along those lines.
So is it, would it be preferable to council to possibly include, instead of saying practicing attorney or judge, yeah, we said maybe five years as judge or a much higher threshold for just practicing attorney?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, let us, we will, we will, we will, we will change that.
And I think there, I don't know if it works in this minimum qualification section, but you know, there's lots of job postings that will say, you know, experience with software development, this programming language preferred, right? So if there are specific gaps that we think we, jury trials or whatever those things are.
You say that they're preferred.
They're preferred.
That's kind of in section seven.
Yeah, it is, a little bit, but. It's, but that's sort of under the submittal section, so I think the mayor's point still is germane. I, I think we absolutely can enhance that section that way.
Yes. I mean, because ultimately, I just, what I don't want is to waste applicants or our time.
Exactly.
You know, when we're looking for something pretty specific, I think the more specific we are about what we're looking for, the better this process will go.
This is great feedback, thank you.
Mayor, if I can, I want to focus on two pieces of this, and that is, one, a little bit about what I hope to see in the RFP, and two, inviting all of us to then have a discussion a little bit about what we want in our code at some point, about whether or not this triggers a code revision on operations, qualifications, you know, type of penalties that we would like to seek. I mean, I know right now, we can impose a fine up to $2,600 and 364 days, and we have the right for defendants to have jury trials, we have the right to have certain claims be misdemeanor, which then triggers the right for a jury trial opportunity to a defendant. And I guess some of these questions are, on the second first, is do we want to have these kind of penalties for the kinds of code violations that they are all allowed for right now? Because right now, section, I think it's 2.1 or, you know, section two of our code basically says how the municipal court, article four, talks about our municipal court and it's even, you know, chapter one, our general provisions of the court, talk about the title, the scope, and then of course, you know, what it is that we can even have, and the type of penalties that are allowed for each of them. So I, I would like to put that as maybe either a discussion for, a work session or, you know.
I think our, I think our, from the conversations that I have had, I think our existing judges would agree that our entire municipal court section of the code needs to just be reviewed and that there are definitely some improvements that can be made, I think they would agree with that.
I would just recommend that if council does provide direction to staff to move forward with an RFP process, and we do end up with a new judge, that we leverage their experience, this enhanced experience. Absolutely, yes. That we just, you know, include it in the RFP. They should probably be a leading voice, maybe not the leading voice, but a leading voice in that conversation.
But I think that's a great point, Counselor, you were to put that on the radar for.
And I do think that goes hand in glove with our RFP though, in that on our packet, it was page 170, which is the professional services agreement that we, is a sample. And I know that we have in our RFP that we put out kind of some bullets as well. But I would like to be in a position, sort of like Counselor Heller said, of making this where people are serious and have spent some time and energy and thought about what it takes to be a judge in Cherry Hills Village. And, you know, the very purpose of why we're doing this is to see if we can or should upgrade some of our areas. And so I would almost like to see a bullet of evaluation or a, a selection criterion to be an evaluation of our current code and suggested revisions that we might consider as a means to do this upgrade, because it's real easy for a thousand law firms with a lawyer who's a litigator of 10-plus years to submit an RFP that basically says, I've got nine million jury trials and I can handle just what you need. I don't know what you got, but I can handle it. And I would really like to see a better RFP than that that actually tells somebody, I've looked at your code, I've thought about your code, and I would consider this as a way of which you would evaluate whether I'm the right judge for you or not.
We do have somewhat aggressive time for.
Well, I, I think what we could do is add a bullet related to this question about, you know, modernizing our municipal court section of our code. And then in the interviews, you could then play on that or build on that with specific questions to potential candidates based on the RFP.
Well, I would almost like to see it as a written submittal instead of a, what they came up with in the middle of an interview, because I, I mean, and we do have, you know, the duties in the first bullet, they're on the bottom of page one of a 10, you know, and, and basically run the sta, run the courthouse. But I want to know what they want to do to make Cherry Hills or be in conformance with what they believe we need. And number two, to see what they've sort of thought. I don't want them to just walk in and say, well, you need to treat dog cases like this city does, or you need to do this like this, because that's what nine other people do. I, I get that, that that can be a good thing. But it can also be, hey, I've studied the unique feature of Cherry Hills and I have seen that code enforcement cases have risen. Something that would indicate a level of individuality to understanding what it is that we're trying to do here as a factor in an evaluation of how good they are for us. I leave, you know, the specific wordsmithing of how to do that to our esteemed HR manager who's going to have to evaluate and whether that's a, a valid and fair criteria upon which to decide. But I do think that I am interested in not just getting one of a thousand off the shelf, here's my RFQ.
I think we'd be lucky to get 10, not 1,000, but.
I, if I can just chime in, just, so section seven, the instructions and submittal contents is by design intended to be stuff that is for the most part off the shelf, primarily driven by our schedule. That doesn't mean that we don't have opportunities to investigate, to learn more, to ask other more specific nuanced questions. But our turnaround time for these submittals is extremely aggressive. And I think we were attempting to not dissuade anybody from submitting their proposal with a overly customized submittal for our particular process.
Because there's going to be an interview process, right? I mean, there's going to be an interview process.
Yes, yes.
Which is. But I guess where I'm going is maybe it can be a very simple bullet of matters unique to Cherry Hills Village in your RFQ, in your response. Maybe not, but what I'm really trying to do is, I'm trying to, to whittle down so that we really do see people who are interested and understand what Cherry Hills is and capable of pulling off everything that we want them to do.
Could we compromise and maybe just put, it seems like just a bullet under duties that lists what you're describing and then, you know, in other words, recommend to council changes in the municipal.
Well, and, and we do have that in the first bullet there of including establishing all necessary standards and procedures for operation of the court. So I think we're getting that in the duty. But I just want to make sure everybody that we look at knows that that's a very important thing to this council because of how important it is to upgrade and modernize. This isn't just coming in and using what we've already got on the shelf, they're actually helping us figure out our new protocols.
And, and, and Counselor, I totally understand, I guess we had just a different approach, we were not attempting to winnow down through the submittal process. We were trying to cast a net as wide as possible.
And I actually, I like that, but I, I do think we could be more specific in the lists of duties, rather than just saying administering the court, saying advising council with respect to improvements in the.
Current and ongoing.
Yeah, in the municipal code even, I mean, with respect to, with respect to the court and, because I, yeah, when I was reading through it this afternoon, I was like, oh, really? $5 for something, or, I mean, it just seemed woefully, there just didn't seem to be a lot of teeth in, in there.
Yeah, well, the duties is actually in the con, the agreement, so that's for a point in the future, the, it would, I guess it would be the scope of work. I mean, I think that maybe adding a bullet in the scope of work that just says that you'd be expected to review and evaluate and advise council on the city's municipal court code and suggested changes. Asking them, you know, telling them that they'll be expected to do that if they're selected and not asking them to do it all in advance of even.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I'd like to cast a wide net, because I'm, I'm worried about how many proposals we may get if, if we get too selective. But I, I do think it's something we need to follow up on in the interview process, for sure.
Other than that, I think it's great to get this RFP out on the street, because I do think we all have come in with an understanding of how we can expand, improve, and I think the faster we get there, the better. So with that said, my idea was just a little bit, like I say, to try and give a very big push to anybody responding that we want their help. And that's an expectation of their evaluation, but the sooner we get it out there, the sooner we'll see what we get.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, well, I was going to make some comments. The mayor said she didn't know if she was qualified to review this, I don't know if I'm any more qualified, but I did look at it, I thought actually you did a good job. Both in terms of, both in terms of the RFP requirements, as well as the sample contract. I'd just say, adding a comment to this is, I think a lot of what's talked about is really, really important. I think that's what our interviewers will be doing, and I think you look, you get together and you talk about that ahead of time and agree about what you're going to be talking to the candidates about. And you do it that way. But with regard to if I was going to make a suggestion, and you put it in there, which is probably sufficient, you do reference in the scope of work and in the contract, section seven one of the Home Rule Charter and two of the, of the municipal code. You might want to either attach those sections to the documents or at least put a link in there that they can, that they can go to.
To review, yeah.
If I may just add.
Okay.
Oh, is it? Okay, good. I was just going to add one thing, and that I, I recently became aware also that there is something called the Colorado Municipal Judges Association, or something like that, that specifically could be a resource to us in trying to figure out additional things of who's competent, what's competent, what we want, who we want. And I know that Catherine, you've already probably, you know, looked at them, reached out to them and sort of, or the, the city as a whole, looks at that as a resource again that we can use to try and help us find and cast this to the broadest, you know, to your comment, Counselor Robinson, I assume that a lot of folks who want to be municipal judges and talk about municipal court judge issues are a part of that association already.
And they're, they're on our distribution list.
Okay. Well, I think that looks like the discussion's wrapped up, but it, it sounds like there's direction, I guess.
Yeah, so, so let me just try and synthesize what I think the direction. Yeah, so let me just try and synthesize what I think the direction we've heard is. So one, it does, it does sound like counsel would like for us to work on an RFP to get distributed. I do know, and this is a little bit of an audible, and I'm going to catch somebody off guard here a little bit, I do know that the human resources manager is taking excellent notes about potential changes that we've noted, that we could, enhancements. If you don't mind just running through, just to confirm that we are catching them all, I would appreciate it.
Yes.
Sorry about putting you on the spot here.
No, all good. So--
Surprise!
Yes. With regards to experience, changing it to five years as a judge, 10 years as a practicing attorney.
Actually, I think some discretion on your guys, just some different, again, I wasn't saying five or 10, I don't know if that's right, but--
I like that.
Then, then never mind.
It does say in there, "Experience with jury trials preferred," but if there is a year that you would like us to throw in there, okay. And then, making sure that our insurance matches the terms and conditions with the sample. I do know Kathy provided a sample because there'll be negotiations with whoever the finalist is, so there will be changes presented through that process. And then, we will put in, sorry, evaluation, a report and information provided on an annual basis, which may include a self-evaluation to city council for the information for you all to know about their performance through the year.
And then-- That I think would go in the scope of work section.
And then, putting in a bullet with regards to reviewing, evaluating, and advising city council on municipal code updates, fee schedule, et cetera, for modernization.
Does that sound right?
That sounds--
Okay, so with that said, now that we have direction from counsel to pursue that with said changes, I have some more questions for you. In the, in the schedule of the RFP that you see, we talk about specifically, I'm going to turn to Section 6, and I might ask that you all follow along here. The internal review of proposals, which is scheduled for October 1 through 3. Again, this municipal judge service will report directly to city council, they will not report to me. Therefore, it is appropriate for city council to execute that step. I am recommending to you that you select two council people, just like you do with boards and commissions, to take care of this particular step. That could also involve working with staff on potential interview questions for council through an interview process. So that is my recommendation to you. I guess, and I have a couple more questions after this as well. But, so my question is, does that sound acceptable? And if it does, who would you like those two representatives to be? So I would also look at your iPhone schedules and make sure that you have availability the one, the first through the third.
So would it be the same people then, would also have to have availability for the actual interviews? So this is the pre-screening?
So, so, that, well, okay, I'll just give you a sneak preview on my big second question, which is really a two-parter. So, we have an opportunity for city council to do the interviews as a body, and we could do that like the city manager process that you have done in the past through an executive session, or we could notice it and we could do it publicly, or you could have the same two people then perform the interview that you had do the finalist selection process. So there's really three options there. Either way, I'm going to recommend that for the finalist selection process, you still just have two people. Whether or not that wants to be the same people or not, that's your call. That's, that's a policy decision.
Okay. So I think two people sounds reasonable. Are there people who would be interested in doing that?
Just, is, does it make sense to have maybe one representative from each of the classes, if you will, of the counselors?
Sure.
I was thinking, and in that case, maybe not speaking for Karen, but I think Counselor Heller should be representing--
Can I ask what the dates are again?
The first through the third for the selection process.
Yeah, the only thing I just note is the night of October 1st is Yom Kippur through, which is a Wednesday night, October 1 through Thursday night, October 2, is pretty much right in the heart of your 1 to 3.
Yeah, this is just an internal meeting.
Yeah, I mean--
So we could just do it here in the office at whatever time works for whatever, whichever council members can do it. We, we all have maximum flexibility within that window.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And--
When I say "we," I mean--
And there's nothing, I mean, I don't think, assuming there's a follow-up period of time too, I don't think that runs in any Jewish holidays, but I mean, I'm more than happy to volunteer, but I also don't want to take the spot of somebody else, so--
So Chris, just to make sure I understand, so this is just reviewing resumes, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
And possibly also looking at some potential interview questions.
Okay, and it's one of the, sometime between the first and the third?
Yeah, we, it depends on who gets elected and what our schedules all look like.
Okay, so I'm happy to do it, if that's--
Okay, Counselor Heller has been nominated. Is there, I think Counselor Eber has expressed that he, his willingness--
I'm happy to participate, but I, I'm out of town the first through the third, so I could do interviews if you need another person to do that, but I can't, I can't do the initial vetting, so--
Yeah, and Chris, I'm out the first, but I am available the second and third.
Okay. So it sounds like maybe Rob and Dave. Anybody else dying to do it? Speak up, forever hold your peace. Okay.
Interviews themselves, that's the 7th through the 15th.
Okay, so Counselor Heller and Counselor Eber will do the review.
And it sounds like we're down--
And then--
Mayor, it just, it sounds like we're down to the third, because the second is Yom Kippur and the first, I'm not here, so--
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. All right. And then, I don't know whether you'll need, like you said, well, you can, we can deal with the interviews when that comes up.
Yeah, I will say, the interviews, the reason there's a range, I know that that Monday through Wednesday is Cherry Creek School District Fall Break--
Yeah.
That, and there will be also many other school districts that have fall breaks that, that could affect the schedules of obviously you guys, but that also could affect the schedule of people who might be wanting to submit their application. We also wanted to have it at least be for one business day of, of the week, every day of the week, because a lot of judges who fill this role in other locations often will have more than one jurisdiction that they perform the service for, and so they might have a Tuesday be in, I'm making stuff up here, right, Broomfield, Wednesday be in Aurora, and Friday, they are in Parker. I have no idea, but, so, they may not be available on a lot of days, so we wanted to provide at least one day of the week. Our goal, explicit goal, is to try and have the interviews that first week for a variety of reasons, timing being the biggest among them. But, but--
First week in November?
No.
October.
So it's listed as the October 7th through 15th, as you can see on the air. So our goal would be to have it from the 7th through, I think it's the 9th--
It's like a Tuesday, yeah, the 7th is a Tuesday.
So it's 7th through the 10th, then? Is that right? I'm looking at Catherine, is that right? What is that Friday? Yes, but what is the Friday of that week?
7th through 10th.
The 10th, 7th through the 10th. So our goal is to shoot for the interviews to be the 7th through the 10th.
Why didn't you pick the 6th? So that you would have one day of, so that you'd have all the days of the week?
Yes, and it's very aggressive. Yes, we could. I mean, that's literally, we'll be contacting people on the 3rd, right? "Hey, can you come in for interviews?" The 6th is--
Yeah.
I mean, "Hey, are you available on Monday?" So anyway, the reason we picked the 7th, that's also super aggressive, but that might also work out well, because that is a city council day, right? And so we might have an opportunity for all of council to participate, because you will hopefully all be here for city council that night.
Okay.
Well, and maybe given the high quality of the judges we're looking for, maybe we can find out whether Stephen Brey or Anthony Kennedy are available to be interviewed.
All right, well, I think you have your direction.
Okay.
And we'll move on to reports. I do have nothing to report, so we'll move, I think we started down here last time, so we'll go down here. Counselor Heller.
Okay, the Centennial Airport Noise Roundtable Meeting from earlier in the month. Mayor, as you said, noise changes that we're mostly observing are via DIA. It is a prior route that was being used, and they don't know why, but it's been reinstated, if you will. They stated it's mostly along the I-25 corridor. I would beg to differ that with that a little bit, but--
I can see why they think it's that.
Yes. And they did make a comment that on cloud-covered days, it does make the noise from whatever the source, whatever the airport is, is going to be louder. Albert County joined, and I'll tell you, they were kind of a pistol, is the way I would say it, complaining mightily about why the training boxes are all over Albert County. They specifically made a suggestion to the committee, which I don't think has any basis to do this, but can, other than recommendations, that the training boxes be shared amongst Douglas, Albert, and Arapahoe County, including over our Fair Village and Greenwood Village. Why is it all over Albert County? So interesting discussion. Lots of complaints about the area, and I'm very sympathetic to the folks out there. The descriptions are 5:00 AM to 11:00 AM, multiple aircraft, overlapping aircraft, flying over schools, low in homes, people can't, over the training box, have to stay indoors kind of thing. There is a dashboard being developed that the training companies are going to ask them to participate in, that shows number of aircraft, noise type, that sort of thing, so there'll be a little bit better metrics on it. It'll be updated periodically. Significant change, if you haven't read or heard, that JSX is starting ser, started service September 10th. This is, it's, it's really interesting, it's a term of art, I guess. It is scheduled charter service. It was taken, they moved from Rocky Mountain Airport because they basically weren't getting along in some way, and, so we'll have those. If you have, if you're not familiar with them, I looked online, you can book a reservation just like an airline, they're a partner with United, and they fly, as an example, to smaller markets from Centennial right to Burbank, as an example. All first-class seats, they're flying Embraer, you know, newer, and by the way, the least noisy type. And then last, I don't know what we pay, but the roundtable has overcollected and they're anticipating a funding holiday for next year. So whatever RFP is--
Good job. Way to go, Kate. And I think there has been some controversy over, because I know that one of the provisions of Centennial Airport is that there would never be scheduled service, right? And that's, there's been some controversy about that?
And it's interesting, because it's not scheduled flight service, it's scheduled charter. To the point, they mentioned that South Metro, you probably know, doesn't have a dedicated aircraft fire rescue, so that the airport station can be out on a structural call or medical call, and they're not, they don't meet the runway requirements being located on the runway. They don't have to change for scheduled charter, but they would have to change if it was actually scheduled service like United or Delta.
Yeah.
So it's very interesting. You don't get good fire protection. Think about that when you fly.
Yeah, before you, before you book your flight. Okay, thank you. Counselor Eber.
No report for me.
Mayor Pro Tim Hullett?
No report.
Counselor McGuire?
No report.
Counselor Robinson?
I have a brief report. We had a meeting of the Region 9 Opioid Abatement Council this last week. Just, should have mentioned this previously, but just for your information, the leadership was re, was voted on and appointed Francois Bergen, Aurora City Council, as the chair, and Stephanie Pico, Mayor of Centennial, as the vice chair. Tyler Brown, sheriff, has joined the committee, the council, which is good to have his involvement. So that's all been finalized, and now we're in the middle of responding to responses to RFPs and funding both existing grantees and looking at new grantees. There's quite a bit of money, as you know, for another 17 years, and there are new cases going forward towards additional, what's the right word? I'm not sure, but sources of money, maybe.
Revenue streams.
Revenue streams.
Quick question about that. I know that Mayor Pico is term limited, and will, her term will end. Is it, is she appointed as an individual, or is she appointed as the mayor?
As the mayor, so as, as she, as her term ends, someone else will need to--
Okay.
--take that spot. I think you all know that she took a serious look at running for governor and has concluded not to put her hat in the ring. So anyways, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Fisher?
No report.
City manager?
I will start on the other side, Emily.
I will just shout out our nonprofit partners. The Cherry Hills Land Preserves Barn Party is next Friday, September 26, and we will be celebrating in the brand-new barn, so please get your tickets. I don't know that there are that many left. Thank you.
I will do my report last.
I just wanted to remind council that the 2026 proposed budget is available on the DICE, and we will have our budget study session October 21st with the first reading and public hearing on November 18th.
Not much of a report, maybe more just of an after-action update. If you weren't aware, the Brave Church on Sunday held a memorial service at the request of Turning Point USA in honor of Charlie Kirk. They had about 3,800 people that showed for that. They were the only church in Colorado that was asked to, to hold such a memorial. Plenty of security there, both private, and, and we upped our response and had Greenwood in Denver sort of on standby in case anything went a different direction, but there were no issues at all to report. It was a successful memorial, both in terms of attendance and traffic egress, so no issues there at all.
Hey, chief, just, I don't know if someone else can mention, but the car show was fantastic. I got to attend and won a couple of the raffle items, so--
Oh, awesome. A new car?
No.
A new car. And I see Director Workman over there.
Yes. It's all like--
I know. I just wanted to--
I was just gonna, or maybe, are you going to talk about the Citizens Academy? Okay, great.
Yeah, sure. Unless, I want to--
Yeah, we had our first Citizen Academy on Wednesday night, so successful that we've actually added another person, so it went very well. There was so much wonderful discussion that it actually went long a little bit. It did sort of rush the activity. It did seem like everybody on the, in the, in the group really enjoyed the activity. My suspicion is with the public safety session coming, this upcoming Wednesday--
Tomorrow.
Oh, my goodness. That the activity that, that Director Workman performed, which was amazing and was really engaging, it will probably still not get as many oohs and ahs as any public safety activity that we might undertake. So we have two, two sessions left. As a reminder, we have tomorrow, tomorrow night, and then again, a week from Thursday is the last session. So we have, we've gotten great feedback from the residents who have attended, so, and we're kind of taking some notes about things, about ways we can improve it.
Can I just--
6 o'clock, 6 to 8.
Can I add one comment? Is, it was interesting to me that I think half, or maybe five of the 11, participated in the police academy. So that was, that's interesting.
Yeah, the chief, it's going to be, it's going to be, both the police department and South Metro are going to have some information. I don't believe South Metro did anything at the, at your academy, so that's going to be some new information for those five folks. But yeah, the chief's going to have to figure out how to provide the basic information while still entertaining, you know, the old, the veterans in the room, so, good luck. That's the only update I have.
All right. Any other, anyone else, so there, oh, yes, city attorney?
No update from the city attorney's office, other than--
Thank you for being here.
Wonderful to see you all.
All right, well, if there's nothing else-- All right, well, if there's nothing else? Oh yeah, Jay wanted to go last, that's right.
Oh, you can skip over me. So before I get into what's up on the screen, Bellevue and I-25 interchange. This is old hat for some of you, some of the newer counselors, just a little background information first. So Dr. Cog is the regional transportation authority in this area. So every year when federal funds become available, there is a process, and that process has changed in the last few years. So there are now regional groups that look at projects in their area. So we're, we're members of the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum, and Counselor McGuire is our representative on that board. And so each year, the technical advisory committee, which is made up of staff, and Chris and I both tag-team on that, we review projects from all of Arapahoe County. If we put in projects, which we rarely do, because these projects are more regional projects, a lot of them are on, are on CDOT rights-of-way and have more of a regional impact, we rarely have those projects that we are putting in for these federal funds. So each year, those projects are looked at, and the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum has been allotted 19 projects each year. It's all allotted by population and a number of things. And so of the 19 projects, every, for the last few years, Bellevue and I-25 interchange has been one of the projects that the forum looks at. And until last week, or a little before that, that was the process, and Chris and I had been talking to Counselor McGuire about, this project has been around for probably 10 years, 2016 at least, and Freedom, Freedom might be able to talk closer to it than I can.
Were you on council then? Yeah, so, it's been a while.
Yeah, and so we've always, as an organization, remained neutral. There, there, when the, when the project started getting some steam and the group got together, we were invited to the group, but we didn't commit money to the group, so we didn't have a lot of say as an organization. But we were involved, and I'll, I'll go through some, some of that here in this slide, but I want to give everyone a little background first. And so we've, we've never, there was some concern with our residents about cut-through traffic, and so we remain neutral. There's a number of different scenarios that have been looked at. So like I said, until recently, this, this was something that was gonna have to be looked at by the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum. CDOT has decided to pick up this project as one of their projects, so it is no longer going through the same process. So we will not be submitting that, we actually had 19 other projects that were submitted, so we had the exact number. So all of the projects that were submitted will be recommended to the executive committee of the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum. And then I'll talk a little bit about the process, where it goes from there. So for those of you that are not familiar, this was the study site that has been looked at because of the congestion at Bellevue and I-25. This site was studied with Denver, with Arapahoe County, Greenwood Village, were the big players, because they all have areas that come together right here in this, in this, and their boundaries. So this is the area that we are talking about. So the, the alternative that was being moved forward by Greenwood, mostly, Denver was hard getting on board because Denver's policies, any improvements have to have multimodal, and, and this didn't have a multimodal component to it. So that kind of fell apart. It, it got brought back up here in the last few years, kind of behind the scenes to us, because it was more Denver, Arapahoe County, and Greenwood Village talking about this. But now that CDOT has taken it over, it sounds like it's going back to the drawing board, so design will be looked at again. The process is going to take years and years. It's estimated at $100 million right now. NEPA alone, maybe five or six years, just to get through that process. And we still don't know what the design will be. Again, this was the one, the diverging diamond is one that was looked at, this is not the one that is moving forward. I don't know if you're familiar with diverging diamonds, it's when traffic gets on the wrong side, and it, it's really scary unless you're from Europe, because while you're in the middle of the intersection, you're passing cars on the other side. That was one of the options that was looked at. This split diamond, which is, and this is sideways, so.
This was the one that our residents-
This is the one that-
Got upset.
Troubled our residents, so if this comes back up, it's actually using Bellevue and Union, so that's why it's called a split diamond. So it's using two intersections to function as one, basically.
There was, there was a time where you couldn't exit, I think this, it's evolved over the years, but there was a moment where you couldn't exit southbound at Bellevue at all. You had to exit at Union and then do basically a frontage road to get to Bellevue, which would have really put a lot more traffic onto Union, which, which concerned-
That's where our residents got concerned. So this, this is just a look, and I'm, I'm going over this real quick because it's just a report. So if you want to see more of this, we can sit down, I can show you the whole study, and it, it's great if you're bored. So this is just the southbound view, this is the north, the southbound entrance, and so there's all these movements. This is the northbound, and then again, like Chris said, this modified it so you could exit at both. So this is what was concerning. The cut-through analysis isn't that concerning, because if you look at this, it basically says the differences are going to be, if you do the split diamond, that, that was the leading candidate, there would actually be less cut-through at Happy Canyon and Quincy. Again, we all know what cut-through analysis, there, it's just a model they put in a computer. It doesn't, it's hard to put that human context to it, and what Waze is telling you. So this is just an engineering best guess of what will happen with traffic. But again, and I think there's merit to it, our residents were concerned that, you know, this may cause more cut-through, through Quincy. And so again, the, the cut-through the other way is, is even less, according to the analysis. So like I talked about, the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum will move 19 projects to the executive committee. They will vote on that group of projects to then send to the Dr. Cog process. And again, this project will not be in that process. So this project now goes through a different process, which CDOT puts in their own projects, and then they all get thrown into the regional review committee. So each CDOT project, whatever region it is in, will be reviewed at that point with all of the projects that each region has put in. So that's the regional review committee, so that's made up of representatives, one from the transportation forum, Dr. Cog has representation, CDOT and RTD all have representation regionally on that. And then at Dr. Cog, there's the transportation advisory committee, who then take all those regional committee recommendations and roll them into one. And then Counselor Eber, who sits on the executive committee for Dr. Cog, will see that whole group, not as individual projects, but as, here's the projects that we would like to move forward, and those are all then put into the regional transportation plan, which is a long-term plan that is a, it's an overall long, it's, it's a master plan. It has a lot of big overarching ideas, and then these specific projects are plugged in each year. Projects come off, projects go on, so it's a continuing process underneath that master plan for the regional transportation plan. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on that. So if questions come up from constituents and this project starts to stir more, we can talk more about that, and, and we can all decide how we want, how council wants to approach that. But it will be years and years still as this process moves forward.
And so, Jay, good stuff, that is an excellent update. A week and a half ago, this was going to be a much more thorough report by Jay, because it was on the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum list as the number-one project. So Counselor Person McGuire was gonna have to vote, and so normally, the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum representative is often able to handle those duties on their own. That would have risen to the level probably of needing council input about how to handle such a vote. Now CDOT has taken it off that plate, and so no longer is it at that level. But we thought an update was still relevant, because this will likely, residents will likely start hearing about this a lot more now. It's going to maybe be in the press, you know, who knows? So we thought it'd be best to update you so that you're prepared, at least with background, so that you're not caught completely off-guard if you do get questions from residents.
And that actually reminds me that at some point, and I can't remember where I saw this linked, CML or Dr. Cog or something, but I think everybody's probably aware of the BRT that's being built in, at Colfax, along Colfax, and how disruptive that was been. And at the, one of the past Arapahoe County mayor's managers and commissioners' meetings, when RTD was there presenting, the city manager of Engle, or of Glendale brought up the proposal for BR, Bus Rapid Transit along Colorado Boulevard. And in that conversation, RTD basically said, among a lot of other things, that's just still on the, you know, napkin drawing, and, and they're, they're not necessarily supportive of it. Obviously Glendale's very concerned about impacts that would have on their businesses. Well, it's not the back of a napkin, there is a full-blown plan for Colorado Boulevard Bus Rapid Transit that seemed much further along than the impression I got at that last meeting.
So Director Workman, you may need a microphone, but we actually, because of Counselor Person McGuire's participation in the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum, she has been the designated, council appointed her as the liaison to that effort. But the good news here is on that BRT down Colorado, it doesn't likely go far enough that it would impact Cherry Hills Village. With that said, I'll be happy to let council know that Director Workman has been diligently attending a series of what sound like mind-numbing virtual meetings to listen to all these different jurisdictions argue regarding this particular project.
It looks pretty firmed up in that document, it was, I was a little-
So I have been attending all of those meetings. City Manager Kramer's correct, nothing's proposed far enough south that would impact Cherry Hills Village. Yes, there are several alternatives that have been developed. The issue has been getting CDOT, RTD, and Glendale and some of the other communities that are, that are impacted by that to agree on any of those alternatives. It has been very spirited discussions, I would say, particularly with Glendale, because it does have a significant impact to a lot of their commercial business. But particularly with CDOT and RTD and some of the bridges that are on Colorado Boulevard, once you get into Denver and Cherry Creek and that sort of stuff, who's gonna pay for it, all that sort of stuff. So yes, there are developed alternatives, but there's, there's little to no consensus on what the preferred alternatives are.
But I, I do think Director Workman is continuing to monitor that to ensure that nothing changes with their, their last stop is University Hills?
That sounds correct, yeah.
Yeah, University Hills.
That's pretty close.
It is, but, but the route, the buses actually then keep going, they go right past us, there are no stops.
Okay.
But it does go all the way to the Eastmore Station.
Southmore.
Southmore.
Sorry, Southmore. We want to ensure that suddenly a stop doesn't show up at Colorado and Hampden.
Correct.
For example, right?
Definitely do, but I, I, I mean, not that it's in our jurisdiction, but University Hills will have an enormous impact on the residents of Cherry Hills Village.
Agreed, agreed.
That is a business center for people who live in that quadrant of the city. Did you get the impression, do you get the impression from these meetings? At the Arapahoe County meeting that I was at, it sounded like it wasn't even agreed that they were even going to do it. This document made it sound more like, we are gonna do it, it's just a question of which of these, are the islands gonna be in the middle? Are they gonna be on the sides, are they gonna be, right? It's which of these alternatives? What is the sense that you're getting from these meetings about?
My personal sense is there is still an enormous gap between organizations and what the appropriate path forward is.
Okay.
I do think that folks agree in principle that BRT is a good thing, and that BRT on Colorado could have some advantages. I, I think they're, I think they're far apart on what the appropriate implementation strategy is.
Okay. Yeah, that gave me a little bit of a, like, oh, that's exciting.
I'm just, I'm just glad to be able to report to council that we are on it.
On it, all right. Well, if there is, is there anything else, nothing else? Then we will stand adjourned at 8:29 PM, and thank you, everyone, for coming.